Seeing one's body or belongings in a fountain, splash pad, or lake. The director of community services may issue permits to camp in open spaces for youth organizations or schools. The city manager may issue permits for camp or camp facilities in connection with a special event, or to grant a temporary permit for camp facilities. This was put in there in case in the future we identify an area that we want to allow for camping that would be permitted. To deal with the property issues, if items or properties are left in public areas, we have to provide some notice. There is a 24-hour notice, and if removed, the city will store the belongings for 10 days before disposing of them. If cited, the penalty is a class three misdemeanor. This really is the last step we plan to use. We want to use other things. We also added a provisions in the park regulation that states the use of the Ramadas without a reservation or permit for a period exceeding two consecutive hours. For purposes of this provision, use shall be deemed consecutive if occurring within the same six-hour period. Also a provision in the park regulations for a two-hour timeframe, which is different than the other ones, but specifically related to the parks, that we can remove abandoned So the plan moving forward is a final ordinance will be prepared based on any comments that we receive from the study session. This ordinance will come before the council either the first or second meeting in June, and that's really based on how much changes we have to make tonight. If ordinance is approved, it will take two meetings and a 30-day cure period, so it will be effective either in July or August. This ordinance is one of the tools that we need to address the concerns that have been brought up. The plan is not to go around just giving citations. The plan is to educate and use persuasion, and the last resort will be citations. Moving forward, in the next budget, starting July 1st, we have one existing employee that will be helping to address the unhoused and unsheltered, and we have one other person that's going to be dedicated in code enforcement that will be dealing with issues regarding the unhoused and unsheltered. The plan is to begin working with other nonprofit stakeholders in developing a plan and coordinating the efforts. We're asking right now of the nonprofits to send us, we're sending out a survey, and they were going to send us in information about what they are doing specifically in each of these organizations, so we can coordinate the efforts. Oops. And that is my presentation, quick and easy.
Not that easy, that's for sure.
So if there's any questions?
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions? Bob?
Does this as-is, does it carve out an exception for like North Mountain Park and rodeo grounds and places where we have people spending the night?
Yes, Mr. Mrs. Mayor and Bob Huddleston, it's, we do have sections under permits, if they have permits that were given, then they are covered. So, and those permits come under either the city manager or the director of community services. Okay?
Any other questions? Okay.
Looking at the provisions you have there, as far as citations, and I appreciate the fact that it's not meant to be a citation.
That's right.
You know, that's a matter of a last resort. What's the fine, is the fines defined by the class three misdemeanor? Thanks Brett, that's what I figured.
Yeah, it's a, the current penalty is a class three misdemeanor. You know, obviously it's going to be up to the judge and as well as prosecutor what the fine is, but the maximum fine, it's the lowest one that we have in class three. The maximum fine is $500.
Okay, so, but I know that that's a matter of last resort.
Right, just like in class ones, the maximum's 2,500. We almost never, you know, are assessing anything close to that.
Because it's not something we're looking to use to make money or anything like that. Just to be clear. The other thing is the Ramada says reserved for two hours. Now, I know we have a reservation system, but is that going to put a cap on the, for the two hours, or?
No, if, if, if it's reserved, then you can use it for as much time as you can need for that.
Okay, this is just if it's an unreserved Ramada.
This is if someone shows up in a Ramada and doesn't have a permit.
You can rest for two hours.
Yeah, they can be there for two hours.
Barbecue or whatever for two hours, and then, okay. Because I think some of these birthday parties last a lot longer than two hours.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, Sean?
I have a quick question. I got a question on how the public is going to be, if this ordinance passes, how the general public will be notified of this ordinance? Like, I'm sure people are watching at home, but people don't have access to internet or unaware of new laws being passed. How is that population going to be notified?
Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor, sorry, I kept saying Mr. Mayor. Councilman Dugan, we, obviously we're going to do our standard ways of getting out ordinances so people are aware of it, but I think our PIO team will work with them to get some more information out and get it out to the nonprofit groups.
Through those nonprofits, yeah.
Because I think in the meeting, they all discussed that they were going to come support when it actually comes to, as an ordinance.
Okay.
In addition, all of our ordinances that do pass are published in the newspaper as well.
Okay. Some, some people just don't, you know, they're not, they're not informed, so that's...
The goal is to try to find as many ways, like, like in everything we do, you know, the idea is to try to educate the public in as many ways as possible, because we all get our information differently. And I know that that's, that's big emphasis of what we want to do. And, and we've also talked about possibly using a delayed effective date. That'll be something that we talked to council about. Either delayed effective date, or having the officers essentially warn and inform for a period before we start actually enforcing the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, I was sitting on the committee when they were talking about this as well, and so, there's a grace period, I believe, even Mr. Weaver mentioned about August, and the reason being is that they're going to go out and inform them and let them know this is getting ready to take place. So we just won't be going out and just, okay.
You know, yeah.
Right, and so they're going to go out and make sure they understand and they know this is taking place, it's going into effect, so you have like a 30-day grace period, basically. We're letting them know.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
Other question?
Well, just maybe signage on, on parks and Ramadas and stuff, too, that would help people as they enter to know. And then, this is not just Ramadas, right? It's the entire, everywhere, like in parks and public spaces and everything, yes.
Any other questions? No, I, no, and I, of course, I was in the meeting, and Councilmember Edwards and I were both there, and, you know, I just wanted to thank all of our nonprofits that they came and met with us. You know, when we first discussed this, and it was brought to us, well, it's brought to us, you know, several years ago, but with the police department and our parks department and code enforcement, you know, brought this to our attention, the concerns, as well as all of us that are getting constant, you know, complaints, that they're not able to use some of our parks, and that they're not safe, and so, we, you know, know we need to do something, you know, to address this, and, and to make sure that all our citizens feel safe and able to use our parks. So, we wanted to make sure that this was a organized effort and coordinated effort with our nonprofits, so that's why we brought the stakeholders that really are the ones that work day-to-day with, with our homeless and most vulnerable. And Jerry, I see you're here, and I'm sorry you missed it, you were out of town, and we, of course, I wanted to make sure that we talked, because Jerry from St. Vincent de Paul wasn't able to attend, and he does a lot, so, but the group was, you know, they kind of read through some of the bullet points of some of the, some of the laws, the previous laws, where we are today, you know, what, why we're at this point that we have to do this, and what some of the other cities are doing. And so, in our police department, you know, Chief Leos was there and explained, you know, how, how, how they can use this and the importance of it. So, after we met with our stakeholders, I, really, we were surprised that all of them there in that room were, were supportive, and that they understand why we're at this point, and, and hope that by putting this ordinance out, that maybe it'll get people a little bit more motivated to get help, because there are a lot of resources in our community. There's a lot, and there was, out of those groups, there were so many different things that they offer. So, so they, you know, felt that, you know, this is definitely something that, you know, they feel that, you know, definitely, you know, that they would support. However, you know, it's not, you know, the end-all solution, so we know that this is going to continue, and we need to come up with a plan, because we know, you know, some, some people may move out of the park, and so where are they going to go? So what are we doing as a city to, to help that? So, we, this group talked about, you know, we already have a CG Helps Homeless Coalition that was formed years ago, gosh, I think about six, six or so years ago, and we've tried different efforts, you know, when it came to the I Help program at the churches and that, and people weren't coming to that, so we know that there's, you know, there's, there's a need. A shelter, yes, people talk about a shelter, but we don't think that's going to happen in the near future, so we talked about some other things, whether it's a, you know, a piece of property, you know, some property where we can, you know, have like a, like a camp location or whatever, the different, different ideas were brought to our attention, and, but we know that that's something that's not going to be an immediate solution, so we're, we're hoping that this group will develop an action plan. We're going to kind of revisit that strategic plan and what we need to do in the future, and we'll put together an action group that is going to continue to explore those different ideas. So, but, but we appreciate, you know, Chief Leos, you know, talking about, you know, what the police department is going to do, you know, like you talked about, warn and inform, you know, he talked about that to this group, that we're not going to go out and just start issuing tickets, you know, immediately. That's not really what the, what we, what, you know, why we're doing this. It's really to, just to provide, you know, clean, safe spaces for all of our citizens to enjoy. So, the police department has always been really, really supportive, and they will continue to work with the businesses. One, one other quick thing is, when Stephen talked about educating and informing the public on what's happening, we are also going to be putting, he's, he's sending out a survey so we can put together information on the services and resources that are available, and we are going to make sure that that is updated for businesses, you know, the community, if they, you know, are concerned about something, you know, or what resources, resources are available, instead of just calling the police automatically, they might be able to, you know, send someone to one of these particular agencies or, or resources to help, help them. So we're, we're just trying as much as we can to have a coordinated effort in informing, you know, the, the community, and informing our stakeholders of what's going on and what we're continuing to do. So, so yeah, so it's just a lot of discussion, and we appreciate all the, all the staff and everyone, everything that you've done, and all those people that came together. So, Anthony.
Yes, I just wanted to say also, from that meeting, which I really love this part, is that we talked about transitioning, so helping them, those individuals that would like help, because some don't want it, but there's, there's others that do, and I think having this, this group come in and we're working together as a team, so it's, it's all of us working together, whether it's Horizon that was there also in our meeting with Officer Deputy Chief Leos, and we're working together to transition them, whatever their needs may be, we can help them, whether that's even volunteering, whether that's with St. Vincent, or, or, or any of these other entities, to help them at least try to get off their feet, if they desire. And I believe it would be a win-win for the, the groups that would like to have volunteers coming up, you know, as well. It's just another avenue to see impact on someone's life, you know what I'm saying, that there'd be a change, and we're trying to help and do the best that we can with our parks, recreation areas, as well as with the individuals themselves, you know, and so I think that's a key piece, too, of us working with them, to try to help them, whatever those needs may be, to the best, to the best of our ability. And I think that group that was there, with all the stakeholders that was there, we had a great group, and I believe that we, we could make a dent in that, be very impactful.
Any other questions?
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Yes, I just noticed, just as I was reading through this ordinance real quickly, this applies to private property as well, so that private business owners and stuff like that can call and, and have some authority to have camping stopped or whatever on their properties, or whatever, you just, private property as well, so.
Do they have to have no trespassing signs, Brett, on private property, or no?
For, for the camping piece, they wouldn't need to have that.
They wouldn't?
They could, you know, they could certainly do that, and that's a, it's a trespassing issue, you know, if they do that. But the no camping piece is if they don't have the, you know, the ability to actually camp there, whether through zoning or the owner's permission, then we can still enforce this on private property. It would give the, the officers, the code enforcement team, the ability to come in there. And again, this doesn't stop someone from camping in their backyard, you know, I can take my kids back there, and we can have a camp out in the backyard, it doesn't stop any of that, but it does allow them to have some ability to stop that. There are cases, for example, when normally, right now, we currently use trespass, because we don't have an urban camping ordinance, but to do that, sometimes we're trying to find a, an absentee owner, might be in, in Delaware, and you're trying to find them to see if they, you know, get permission to trespass them off the property. And so this gives another tool to be able to do that.
And it says, "No person shall be camping, no trespassing by the city." Does that apply also to private owners that post no trespassing with a private sign?
Right now, it's only for ours that do that. The, the other one, though, is it still prohibits camping on private property without the permission of the owner?
Okay.
So yeah, these are, this is just definitely a draft, so if you have any comments, questions, just definitely get back with, with Larry, or Stephen, or Brett, any of them, so. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Anything cheap that you wanted to bring up on any of this? Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move forward.
Next one.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you all are aware, the wastewater programs that the city runs are quite extensive and costly. A good portion of the CIP budget every year is devoted to wastewater infrastructure, and as you can see from this aerial image of the wastewater treatment facility, there's a lot of costs that is associated with operating these programs. There's been an issue that the city has faced over recent years, specifically with the wastewater billing and collecting that revenue, that we want to discuss today along with a potential solution that we'd like the mayor and council's feedback on. And so today, we'll talk about the background of the issue, an agreement with Arizona Water, that would be that potential solution, and then, some other organizations' experiences with this agreement with Arizona Water, to propose next steps, and then, lastly, to seek feedback and direction from the mayor and council. So for the background, Casa Grande is in a unique position where the water provider here in the city is Arizona Water. So all the water that comes out of the tap comes from them, all the water that goes down the drain comes, goes to the city's wastewater facility, so the city is a wastewater provider, but not the water provider. Now, most cities are both the water and wastewater provider, which provides a lot of opportunities, so if someone's not paying their water bill, then they can turn off their water, if someone's not paying their sewer bill, they can also turn off the water bill or seek other methods to ensure that bills are paid, because if you're not paying for a service, then the idea is you don't get the service. However, because, well, and also with Arizona Water Company, for instance, they can also just turn off water service if someone does not pay their water bills. However, the city of Casa Grande, because sewer services are all gravity-fed, there's no real conceivable way to turn off a wastewater service. And so, that has led to the city ultimately having a number of customers elect not to pay sewer bills, because they've identified that if they do not pay the sewer bill, there's nothing that really the city can do about it. And so it's a small percentage that, that that's the case, but it's led to some estimates that the city identified of a minimum of $1.8 million that should have been collected, but not collected. Now, that's a conservative number, it could be much greater than that. And I want to clarify, this is not, you know, residents that perhaps weren't being billed when they should have been, this, these are residents that have been billed every single month, are getting a notice in the mail saying, "You're late, you haven't paid," and are choosing not to pay. And it's the vast majority are residential, about 94% are residential accounts. And so, the city has made efforts to address this in the past. There's been a contract with a collections agency previously, that wasn't very successful at collecting that additional revenue that was being missed. There was, there has been success with a lean program that the finance department and also the attorney's office are working on, and it's been able to help more of that revenue be collected. But the city's looking for additional tools in the tool belt, so to speak, so then, the revenue that should be collected can be collected, and then, most importantly, this isn't an ongoing problem that keeps getting kicked down the road and never really gets resolved. And so the potential solution that we've identified is an agreement that Arizona Water enters into with cities. And essentially, this agreement provides ways, means, so that Arizona Water will turn off the water service for a municipality that is in our same boat of providing wastewater service, but not water service, but Arizona Water will turn off the water service if residents are not paying their wastewater bills. And so, it gives us that control, so to speak, from the city's end. And this applies to all shared customers, so they have to receive water service from Arizona Water and wastewater service from the city, and they have to be 90 days or more past due. So this isn't if someone is a few days late on their bill and they get, you know, slapped with their water being turned off. This is, there's been plenty of notice, plenty of awareness, but they have chosen not to pay the bill. And speaking of notice, the city, under the agreement, has to, one, give notice by mailing a letter or something to the resident, but then also actually go and place a physical notice on the premises as well. That way, there's, it's very clear that something needs to be addressed before further actions taken. And then, assuming all of the requirements in the agreement are met, then Arizona Water will shut off that water service for the, for that customer until they've either paid the balance or entered into a payment plan with the city. And that payment plan is also required to be offered by the agreement. Now, there are some fees associated with this agreement. There's a one-time $1,000 establishment charge, there's an annual fee of 50 cents per shared customer, a disconnection fee of $100, and that covers both the disconnection and reconnection of the service. And there's also a monthly loss revenue fee, that's prorated, and the idea behind that one is, Arizona Water doesn't want to miss out on revenue because they are doing something on the city's behalf, so essentially, Arizona Water would bill the city for that amount of revenue they missed because the water service was turned off. And so if it was, you know, one day, it'd be one day's worth of revenue, and so on. Now, the one-time establishment charge would be paid by the city, however, the other three fees, and I'll touch on this here in a moment as well, the other cities that are, have this agreement with Arizona Water, all pass those costs on to consumers. So for the annual fee, for instance, that's about a four-cent increase for every monthly bill that residents have. And for the disconnection fee and monthly loss revenue fees, those would be added on to the balance owed from the linked customers, much like a late fee or something along those lines. delinquent customers, much like a late fee or something along those lines. And so, that way, it's the city not having to bear that cost that, that's being incurred by those residents. Now, for other organizations' experiences, Buckeye and Sedona, as well as Coronado Utilities, that's over in the San Manuel area, they have all entered into this agreement with Arizona Water. There's also Apache Junction Sewer District and the city of Sierra Vista that are also in conversations with Arizona Water, but to our knowledge, have not made it official yet, as far as signing an agreement. But there are a number of organizations that have already been using this, and some of the feedback that they provide, that they provided city staff, was that each city highly recommended that the city of Casa Grande enter into the agreement. They said that it works. They say that it's very effective. And more than that, it also helps make residents aware that there is a potential for water to be turned off, so that all of the residents will then first address the issue rather than having to have their water turned off. For instance, Sedona says they have not yet had to turn off a water service, because residents have proactively addressed it themselves. Each of these, uh, entities all provided a high level of outreach prior to any disconnections happening, like we talked about. And as I mentioned, the customers responded quickly, uh, to the notices. And the city's found that the duration between when residents, they would have their water disconnected and be reconnected, this in the case of the city of Buckeye, it was much shorter than they anticipated it to be. Where in reality, it was within one day or two days at most that they came in, addressed everything, and had their water service turned back on. So, it wasn't like it was a very long duration. Additionally, all the entities offered payment plans for larger balances, and the city currently offers a payment plan as part of the lien program. And so, the plan would be to just take that same framework for the payment plan we currently use and apply it here as well. And as I mentioned, all those entities passed those fees on to the customers that were not paying. And each city all said they had positive experiences working with Arizona Water Company, where they were responsive. They took care of what needed to be done, what it needed to be done, and they had no complaints in that regard. And overall, each entity said that they received a lot of positive feedback from the community, where they had the residents essentially expressing to them that they thought it was fair, that everyone was paying for the same services, instead of having the people that are paying the bills have to pay higher bills in order to compensate for the revenue that's not being generated from those that aren't paying. Now, for propose the next steps, and the next step would be to engage Arizona Water Company and to develop an agreement to then bring to the council at a future date for adoption. And as part of that, in tandem with it, to work on identifying processes to ensure that the agreement that would be, uh, engage, uh, would be developed and passed by the council would be effective, and that it would be able to make sure that it doesn't just create additional issues, and that it would be an effective process. Would also have to obtain approval from the Arizona Corporation Commission. Now, the reason for that being that Arizona rule right now, it says that a utility provider can't turn off water services except for a certain number of, or any utility service really, except for a number of specific situations. For instance, someone's not paying their bill, that's one of the options to disconnect services. However, since this would be Arizona Water disconnecting on behalf of the city of Casa Grande, we have to receive a variance from the Corporation Commission in order to do that. Now, Buckeye, Sedona, and Coronado Utilities have all received that variance, and so, there's no concern that the city would be also able to do the same thing, because there's a precedent set for that. And then, once approved by the Corporation Commission, there'd be a very rigorous outreach campaign that would take place to make sure all residents were aware, and that would be through, through the billing side. Uh, Arizona Water Company also does a little bit on their end as well. But it'd also be social media outreach, press releases, just to make sure every resident is aware of the change. And then, at that point, it would be time to go live and to implement this as a way to be able to help address the issues at hand, and make sure that this problem is be able, is able to be resolved. Now, that marks the end of the presentation. We'd like to, the staff would like to seek direction and, uh, feedback from the council on this agreement, and if the council would like to move forward with this. And without, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Anthony?
Um, yes, uh, Buckeye, Sedona, and that's the, the Colorado Utilities, the price that you had down there was a thousand to the city, and then there was a 50 cent, and then the hundred. Is that the same amount that Buckeye, Sedona, they're paying as well?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Edwards, that is the exact same. It's very much a copy paste of the agreement. Both entities sent a copy that they had enacted in their councils, and they were word for word the exact same. And so, the understanding would be the city would also receive the exact same agreement. I doubt that Arizona Water would want to adjust it at all. But the idea would be the exact same fees and everything else.
Perfect.
Okay, Matt?
How many shared customers do you have?
It's somewhere in the ballpark of, for residential accounts, which again, is about 94% of the total, about 22,000, a little short of that.
People would be paying Arizona Water $11,000 a year at the 50 cents. I mean, I guess that's their agreement, but I don't understand, they're not doing anything for that. Until we tell them to, to do a disconnection, they get paid for that. But, I mean, if that's their agreement, that's it. But, so everyone in town's gonna have to pay 50 cents more, which, a year, which is not a lot of money, but how do they justify that?
And Madam Mayor and Councilmember Herman, the idea behind that, that's something that was discussed by city staff, of how do we address, we've even looked at if there's any way to, you know, pass that 50 cent increase along to those that aren't paying. And realistically, there was no way to do that without creating a massive administrative burden or headache to have to deal with. And so, where city staff landed is essentially that the cost of doing business in this regard has increased, because of necessity, we have to do something to be able to address this issue. And that involves entering into this agreement, which therefore would mean that there has to be that, in this case, 50 cent increase. And so, that cost of business has increased, which obviously is unfortunate, but it's, uh, means that the mayor and council and the city staff can be able to use to be able to address this issue.
So, we'd have to reset our rates as well, right? There would be a rate increase?
Correct. There would be, have to be a minor rate increase.
Because I, years ago, I said, "Well, we just need to dig one up and put it on the front page of the paper," but they said we couldn't do that. So, um, because I thought that would help spur people to pay. Um, but I was told that, for health reasons, you can't do that. So, this is a good way, because everyone, most people pay their bills, right? And it's not fair for others just to keep going on and, you know, having no consequences for that. We have no teeth, so. And the water company knows how to shut off water, too. So, that's good.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, you said it's a small percentage of people that aren't paying. What is that percentage?
Uh, it's a great question. The, unfortunately, the, uh, the systems that track all of this, it's not geared and designed to provide that number easily. And so, it's been weeks that the amazing people, the finance department have spent trying to pull together these numbers and trying to do their best to identify this. We have identified that there are about 9% of accounts that are delinquent in some way. Now, whether that's, you know, a month or two behind, but then will pay shortly, or whether that's, you know, a year or two behind and just not paying. It's, so it's, to answer the question, it's some fraction of 9%. As far as how much of that 9%, I'm afraid that we, we have to do additional analysis and could do that and get back to you on that.
Of that, what is the total amount owed?
So, that, again, that's another difficult, uh, number to identify. We've, we attempted to go as conservative as possible to not overstate how much, say, is owed, or how much we could have gotten had this agreement been in place. But the bare minimum that we've identified is 1.8 million dollars. And we expect that that could be significantly more. But again, there's no way that we've identified yet to give a specific number as far as how much that is, but we can confidently say at least 1.8 million.
Any other questions? So, Rob, so you just need, um, feedback as far as do we feel we want to move forward with this? Is that what you're, ready?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's correct. Just feedback from the council on it. This is something that the council would like to pursue.
Yeah, I think it's fair. We've been talking about it for a long time. Yeah, I think it's fair. Where you got it, it's got it set up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Anything else? So, it looks like we're, have a few minutes here, 22 minutes. So, I'll go ahead and adjourn the study session, and we'll resume at 7 o'clock. Take a break.